I am Melissa Urban, I am Chair of the Planning Commission and I call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM on December 6. All right, our first item on the agenda is approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from our October 4 meeting. I just wanted to
Chair, if I may, we
Oh, yes. Yes, thank you. All right, roll call. So you just want everyone to say who is present?
I will call the name if you're present, just saying. Chair Urban?
Present.
Commissioner Kendall?
Present.
Commissioner Hassel?
Present.
Commissioner Edder? Is excused, Commissioner Baker? Chair, we have a quorum, you may proceed.
All right, then we'll move on to item three, approval of Planning Commission minutes. I would like to note that the first item, call meeting to order on the minutes is incorrect. It was Chair Urban called the meeting to order as Edder was not at that meeting. Are there any other corrections or updates? I'll take a motion.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes from October 4.
I second the motion.
Great, as long as that includes updating that, thank you. All right, we will move on to item number four, which
Chair, if we could vote on that, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just want to get through this today. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, motion passes. All right, now we're on to item number four, the Starbucks application files number CU 23-2, SP 23-4, and SD 23-5. This is a quasi judicial hearing. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. And now I'm going to read the hearing statement, be prepared for some fun. This is the time and place set for a hearing on the planning file CU 23-2 and SP 23-4 and SD 23-5. The hearing is now called to order, the hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will present the staff report, applicant will present its application and supporting evidence. Any interested persons will then be provided the opportunity to present testimony or evidence and support that is neutral or that is in opposition. Applicant, as a party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. Staff will provide closing comments. Any party may request that the written record remain open to respond to testimony presented at the hearing. At the conclusion of this hearing, the Planning Commission may close the public hearing and deliberate towards a decision, close the public hearing and defer deliberations towards a decision at a date and time certain, or continue the public hearing at a date and time certain. All testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed to the applicable criteria or any other approval criteria you believe to be applicable. Matters unrelated to the application are not pertinent to the Planning Commission's decisions in these proceedings. Failure on the part of any person to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the Planning Commission and parties to this proceeding an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the City Council and Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Commissioners may disclose any expertise contacts, including site visits, site visit biases, or conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you intend to participate in these proceedings.
Commissioner Kendall, I have none.
I have none.
Commissioner Urban, I have none. Does any party wish to challenge any member of the hearing's body based on expertise, context, biases, or conflicts? All right, staff will now deliver the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Urban. The applicant who's joining us online today has submitted three applications. A replat for a subdivision, conditional use, and a site plan for a proposed eating and drinking establishment, as we call it in our development code. The proposal is Starbucks. The location of the property is fronting Southwest Prince Palace, and it's between 4th and 5th Street or 97 Highway. The lot is located in the community commercial C3, which identify the proposed use to be a conditional use in which the Planning Commission is the decision maker. I also would like to note that site plan and subdivision replat are a type 2 decision, which the community development director has elevated into a type 3. We have issued notices to adjacent property owners or notice to development team and agencies as well as publish it in the newspaper, the Pioneer newspaper, per the requirement in the in the Madras Municipal Code. The staff have reviewed the proposal and we have we do not see any reasons for to impose any additional conditions of approval beyond what is stated in the findings and decisions in the Planning Commission document.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant.
Jake, do you want to kick us off?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Jake Erdle, I am one of the developers joining this evening. And Craig has asked me to provide a little bit of background here on our history with the parcel. So thank you for having us tonight. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, but we are nearing, I think, a four-year level of involvement here. It started in July 2019 when I submitted an inquiry to the ODOT to purchase the excess surplus land as a result of their south Y realignment. Shortly thereafter, in December 2020, Jefferson County stepped in and purchased it from ODOT as part of a very common state agency plan that allows surplus property being purchased by local governments prior to being sold to the public. Shortly thereafter, Jefferson County and the City of Madras sent out a request for proposals for developers to submit development plans and make a pitch to purchase the land. We did submit a detailed RFP in January 2021. And then two months later, in March, I believe it was, March 2021, we were selected by the county as the developer, based on a number of criteria in our experience with this type of product. Between January, or excuse me, March 2021 and October between March 2021 and October 2021, we finalized those purchase agreements with the county and subsequently closed on the land in October of 2021. Throughout that time period and up until very recently, we have been engaged in numerous negotiations and conversations with both ODOT, the City of Madras, and Starbucks related to both business points and access conversations regarding the parcel. We've come to what we believe is an agreement and understanding that satisfies the RFP requirements that were originally agreed upon and addresses a lot of both architectural and aesthetic guidelines that the city and the county have kind of expressed desire for, for this parcel.
Okay, thanks Jake for that, for the intro. Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Craig Chenoweth, I'm the planner on the project who is helping to kind of put this, put this application together and get it submitted into the city. Thought it'd be helpful for Jake to give a little background on kind of where, where he's been with this property and and share a little bit kind of about their vision that they had for this property and realizing that the county obviously had desires for for something more than, than what was on this property and to try to bring a little bit of vibrancy to that. And I think, I think what we've done is, is put together a site plan, which you've seen tonight, that, that kind of utilizes that uniqueness of that site, being a regular in shape and trying to fit that in there. Just to kind of give a little background, obviously, we worked with H.J. McCoy to help out with the site plan. And he prepared that, we've been working with architects, Melanie Seuss, who is on the call tonight. So if we have design questions, she's there to answer it. And then we also worked with Joe Bestman, a transportation engineer, who has prepared traffic study for this and allowed, all these things allowed us to work with the city and try to coordinate to come up with the best design that worked well. Obviously, this, this use has a drive-through with it, and when you have drive-throughs, you have a little bit of work that needs to be done to make sure you have adequate queuing distance. The access works well in that it, it works with the area. Being a C3 zone, it's a conditional use, so doesn't mean it's not a permitted use, it's permitted use, but it just needs an analysis to make sure any impacts are mitigated. And we made the findings, and the findings were, was made by the city as well, that there was no undue burden or impact on the area in the design as proposed, fits within the area, is complementary to the area, and, and would obviously provide a service that's kind of needed to this, to this area as well. So from the conditional use standpoint, we fit in there. You know, we worked to kind of put together a design that added adequate landscaping above and beyond what's required for that zone, as well as some additional parking as well. So the site does provide amenities in the way of plaza area so that people can enjoy those outdoors, be able to kind of interact, create kind of a, a street scene a little bit, if, if you would say, for that area as vehicles drive by. So there was design considerations, trying to make that work in an area that has high traffic volumes, and yet you're trying to kind of encourage pedestrian access, which we have walkways that come into the site from the adjacent sidewalks. So it encourages kind of pedestrian activity into the site and also serves the vehicular needs of the site. The access, as kind of found in the transportation study, works. And we got comments back from the Public Works Director, who really didn't have any, who didn't have any issues about the access or ODOT didn't either, as far as us taking it off of Prince Place, which was kind of the original intent of that street that was put in there. So as proposed, the accessway, the circulation to the site is adequate and obviously works rather well for that site, we think, and allows for large queuing distances so that it's not interfering with side, any of the side streets backing up onto the side streets. We have a large queue area on that, so I just wanted to kind of point that out. As far as the infrastructure, like I said, we worked with H.J. McCoy at Redmond, and we worked with Joe Bestman. They helped to kind of put together the, the plans and some of that analysis. Comments back from the Public Works Director, Jeff Heard, did not have any kind of comments that were showing there was an impact necessarily, some of the traffic out there. There was some, some study of, of the intersections within a distance. And if there's questions later, we have Joe that can kind of answer those. We did provide some, some mitigation, as you saw, in the conditions of approval and the way of a prorata share to the intersection at J Street. So that portion of it has been addressed. And in far as sewer and water, there was no, no statements that said, other than it was adequate as proposed. Design review wise, we, we made sure to, to work with the City of Bend, provide them the renderings and drawings that they can look at and provide their feedback. With their feedback, we were able to make some adjustments to that building to provide a little more visual interest, including, you know, some projections and inset, some offsets on that, some canopies, different kind of just elevation changes on the exteriors, windows, doors. It's not a big building, so it's not a large building from that standpoint. But if you look at it from a small building, there is a number of of features on that building that really break up. I wouldn't even say the mass, because when we're looking at, you know, 2,000, 2,400 square feet, there's not a lot of massing, but it does break it up and provides some visual interest as kind of looked at from the adjacent roadways. We've also been working with the city to kind of hash out what we saw maybe in condition number two, which was, which was looking at maintenance of the landscape there along the 5th Street side of the corridor. I think they wanted to look at a maintenance agreement, we were hoping like we could work out a map, but I think from a timing standpoint, we weren't able to, to get there to, to just reference a map. But, you know, we're happy to work with them on a maintenance agreement side to take over and maintain that frontage along there, which is pretty standard for, from standard spec standpoint, that anybody is going to maintain their frontage along, along that side, that they're adjacent to the street. So we're okay with kind of working with the city on that. And then, yeah, as you're aware, the south, you know, this is part of that south Y project, where there was planned infrastructure for this area. And so we were able to kind of create a design that worked well for this area and complimented what kind of the original vision, I think, was for that. So with that, I mean, that's just a quick overview. We concur with the, with the staff findings and conditions, like I said, number two, condition number two, we were kind of working with the city. But I think we've worked with, or come up with some agreements on kind of where it sits with a maintenance agreement, which will include a map identifying the exact area to maintain and water. So I think we're, we're okay with that. And concur and when, and agree with the recommendation for Planning Commission to approve the, the plan as proposed. If you, I don't know if you have any questions, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. And then also if there's questions that are directed more from the architectural design side or the traffic side, we'll make sure that we, we have either Mel or Joe kind of step in to answer those questions for you.
Great, thank you, Craig. All right, now we will receive public testimony. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone here for public testimony? Do we have anyone online for public testimony?
There, there are people online, but there is no any requests on the chat or even any hands up.
Okay. So if anyone online does want to raise their hand, I'll give you a few seconds to do that. All right, seeing as we do not have anyone here to give any of the different types of testimony, we can move on. Does staff want to provide anything further?
I'm looking at Nick here and Jeff Heard if they have any information to provide further.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the Commission has now three options. We can close the hearing now and deliberate towards a decision this evening. We can close the hearing and defer deliberation to a time and date certain, or we can continue the public hearing to a time and date certain. Can I get just an opinion of? Do you think we're good to close? Or deliberate? Or do you want to keep? So we can talk about it, but we'll close the public hearing? Okay, so it looks like we're choosing A to close the hearing now and deliberate towards a decision this evening. All right, so I'll open the floor for deliberation or comments from any of the Commissioners.
This is Commissioner Kendall. I just would like a little bit of clarification. Are we discussing, because it said development as well as Starbucks? So is that like housing development? Or just?
No.
Or just the development of the Starbucks?
Just, just the development of the restaurant.
Of the restaurant?
Quick service, food service.
Okay.
I just, in general, had a question. There was a section in the proposal where there was an allocation of the SDU fees for J Street, and there was an allocation based upon an existing market. Can you just kind of describe that calculation a little bit?
Yeah, so as part of city code, we give credit for previous use of a building that was there. And we give it for the highest use in the past previous 20 years. And so what you had there was you had the old Macasa Restaurant slash shop, and that was demoed part of the J Street project back in 2014. And then you have the Grasslands Building. So what they do is, is they're going to tear down that Grasslands Building, they get credit for their transportation STCs for that, plus the Macasa that used to be there. And then we compare that versus what their new proposed use is. And wherever they're at on the spectrum, they either end up with a credit or they, or they owe, or whatever that is. But when we credit, we don't give money back, we just hold a, here's how many peak hour trips credits you have still on site. So the other thing that came up was when we studied the intersection of J Street, we know it's deficient and everything's going to have an impact on that. And so their development does have an impact, and so they proposed a prorata share for their proportional impact to it. And what we did was we used some of their remaining STC credits to buy those down, and we took care of it that way. And so they still have some credits remaining on the property, but they don't have what they would have without paying that prorata share. So, yeah.
Great, that makes sense. Did you have any other questions? No, I think we've had some time to look at the site and talk about it for a while. So it's an interesting proposal, and from what I read, it meets all the conditions.
I would move that the Planning Commission approve the proposed conditional use, site plan, and subdivision replat for Starbucks, file number CU-23-2, SP 23-4, and SD 23-5, based on the Planning Commission recommended findings and decision.
I second it.
Great, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no one is present to be opposed. Motion carries. Aye. Do we have any other items to discuss?
Yes, quickly, Chair, just wanted to point out that the shooting recorder provided staff document that identifies the terms of our, the Planning Commission. And it looks like Commissioner Edder and Kendall, their terms will expire this year. So staff will be following up after this meeting, emailing you and requesting your interest to request to be reappointed to the Planning Commission. Or if that's not the case, we'll ask you to let us know that. So just let, just a heads up, we'll send you an email, please let us know if you'd like to continue to serve. From a staff perspective, we would hope that would be the case, but just a heads up on that. And, and of course, we're not having meeting, the second meeting in December. No business, and we just try to be respectful of your volunteer hours. So our next meeting will be in January.
Great, thank you, Nick. Without any other items, I end this meeting at 6:55 PM.
That's right.
For the record.
Yeah, and so for the public, we're going to take a brief break. We're going to go into work, the Planning Commission, go into work session. We will beget stewards and, and help our county planners, commissioners come up, get oriented, and then we'll start with the work session in a few minutes.
But she is not able to hear us. Is everyone, is, are there others online that are able to hear?
I can hear you now, Jessica.
Great.
Get an echo? Hello? Yeah, it should be working. Great. Thank you for that pause to make sure that she's participating correctly. All right, Beth?
Okay.
Welcome, thank you, and I think we're happy to hand this off to you and get going on the presentation this evening.
Well, thank you all for having me here. I think part of the ability for Lori and others online to hear is that we speak into the microphones. So with that, I'm Beth Goodman from Echo Northwest. As Nick and Scott have mentioned, I've done a fair bit of work from Address over the years. Actually, my first project ever as a professional planner was for Jefferson County back in 2006. So what we're talking about here is a large lot urban growth boundary expansion from Address. I'll walk through it, I'll walk through the analysis and what we need to do next and what we're considering, and some of the, the questions we have for you here. I'd like to take questions as we go along. And then, of course, Jeff, or Scott, or Jeff, or Nick, or Fatma may well have comments, and I'm hoping they'll jump in as we need to. So if we go to the next slide, please. So in central Oregon, we have this unique thing that is the Large Lot Industrial Program. And it's a program that allows cities in central Oregon to expand their urban growth boundary for large lot industrial sites. What it's doing is it's, there was analysis done What it's doing is it's, there was analysis done about a decade ago that showed that there was need within the three-county area for three sites that were 50 to 100 acres, two sites that were 100 to 200 acres, and one site that is 200 acres. And so what the Large Lot Industrial Program does is it replaces the need for a city in the region to do its own analysis to show that it needs an urban growth boundary expansion with the ability to say, we want to expand for one of these sites. It's very hard for any city to expand for a site as big as 100 acres or 200 acres for industrial uses. Oregon's land use system just doesn't see that happen very often. And I've worked all across the state on these kind of projects for about the last two decades. This program's been used twice, once by Madras for 100 to 200 acre site for the daimler proving grounds. That expansion happened in, I think, 2018, 2006, 2016. For the daimler proving grounds out at the airport. And then Redmond expanded its UGV to include a 200-plus acre site, which was the site that was previously owned by the Department of State lands. So there's still sites in the program, and the program can be refilled as these sites are used. It is, the program is managed by COIC. We made an application to COIC earlier in the year, which I know the decision, the City Council and the Board of Commissioners were aware of. I'm assuming that that had gone in, no, that application hadn't gone in front of our planning commissions. So we'll provide you a little bit of information about that in a moment or two. Nick, do you have anything to add?
No. Well, yes, really quickly. So bigger picture in Oregon, we have urban growth boundaries for our cities. And part of that, each city is to have an adequate land supply within that urban growth boundary. And this is really an industrial lands planning project. And the significance of the regional large lot program is that, one, we saw the need for these large lots because cities can't justify land of this acreage being brought in by ourselves today based on the normal statewide planning goals and how we're to develop a comprehensive plan. So this regional need creates an opportunity for us to expand our urban growth boundary in a very limited basis. So that's really what we're talking about here, is expand our urban growth boundary for a need that we normally couldn't justify. But under state law and very narrow set of circumstances is available for certain cities in central Oregon. But just to kind of ground us on that, why we're here, that's what we're trying to do, and it's part of economic development.
And I would say it's a unique opportunity. I wish there was programs like this in other parts of the state because I think there is need for this kind of thing for economic development in other parts of the state as well. So going on to the next slide. So Jefferson County and Madras jointly submitted a proposal to COIC to consider use of the large lot program. We said that we were looking for a site that was in the 100 to 199 acre size. We are considering the county-owned site that I'll talk about a little bit more later. That's 195 acres. Through this analysis, we're also considering other sites, as you'll see, and you'll see on a map where these sites are. Its future use would be traded sector industrial. So that's industrial uses such as manufacturing, other kinds of things that are really designed to bring employment and revenue into the region. So on the next slide. So according to the Large Lot Program, we had to start with looking within the Madras Urban Growth Boundary. So all of Madras' land, except for a little, some small amounts, is in the north part of the city. So that's where you've got land zone for airport development, industrial, and large lot industrial development. It's all in the blues and purples on the map. What we found is that there are no 100-acre sites within the urban growth boundary that met the kind of requirements we're looking for at this. In the next slide, I think we show that a little bit more. We've zoomed in. We've labeled all the different sites in that industrial area as either being vacant over 100 acres. You'll see there's none of those. Vacant under 100 acres for future airport use, for future wastewater treatment plan use, or sites that are developed already. So essentially, we found that there was nothing within the existing urban growth boundary that met the requirements of being at least 100 acres in size. Are there any questions before I go on to the next set of analysis? Okay, going on. So in doing this, we have to understand what the potential needs are, site needs are, which we'll get into in a few moments. And if you want to understand site needs, you have to identify potential types of industries. So the types of industries that we're looking at are high-tech and clean tech manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, and data centers. You see all the little words there give you some examples of the types of industries. Those are meant to be illustrative and not definitive. So in other words, there could be other types of businesses that are interested in this land in the future. We developed this list of target industries in working with John Stark at EDCO, as well as discussions with Scott, Nick, and Jeff about the types of industries. So we use information from the state of Oregon, from Business Oregon, to understand what are the typical site needs of these kind of businesses. Well, one of their site needs is for sites ranging in size between five acres to more than 100 acres. You generally want sites that are relatively rectilinear in shape. They could be squares, certainly, but you don't want amoebas. Essentially, you don't want blobs because it's harder to develop industrial on blobs. You want flat sites, so sites with less than 5% slope. So common ownership, if you imagine that you have five parcels that are all adjacent to each other, and they have one owner who is willing to sell, then you can imagine how that site could develop. But if you had five owners, five different owners, then you can imagine how it would be harder to assemble that site into one site that was 200 acres or so. So common ownership, adjacent to the UGV. So we don't want something that you have to build a cherry stem to because that's not good planning, and Jeff Heard might fire us all for doing that. And I certainly think that Will, the new city administrator, would fire us. So adjacent to the UGV so that you can get infrastructure to it. The site has to potentially have access to highways, water, and sewer infrastructure. Of course, sites outside of the urban growth boundary don't have water and sewer infrastructure planned to them now, but that would be part of the planning process later. We want to choose a site where it's plausible to get water and sewer infrastructure and where there's access to highways without, say, driving through a residential neighborhood. So of course, you don't want to, you don't want to put your trucks through your residential areas. Access to electrical service, so that ends up being about your electrical providers around. Pacific Power, not PG&E, being one of the bigger providers. And then honestly, I forget the name of the other provider who's more local here. So you have to have enough electrical service, and that becomes a big issue with, say, data centers. And then compatible with adjacent uses. So this is essentially our criteria for what are we looking for in terms of sites. On the next slide, what we did is, I'm betting that Fatma will go back for us. What we did is we looked for sites that were 150 acres or larger and in common ownership. So we know that there are some sites that, you know, the tax lot itself isn't 150 acres. But if you have the same owner of two or three tax lots near each other. And so we found ten sites around the urban growth boundary that were those things. They're generally adjacent to the urban growth boundary in one place or another. And so this map, it's a very confusing map. The next few maps are more simple. But what it's showing us here is all the little things that look like fingers in the background. Those are steep slopes. So we want to know where there's steep slopes. We also, we have a ring around the urban growth boundary at a half mile and at a mile. And you're required to look in, you know, within a half mile for all land and within a mile for land for exceptions areas. So exceptions areas are areas that are in county zoning, like rural residential, rural industrial. And so what we did is we started saying, all right, for these 10 sites, sites, let's see, five and six on the east side of Madras Southeast, they are in Madras' urban reserve, which is a high priority for inclusion in the UGV. But they're all hilly sites. So they all have more than 5% slope. So in our next slide, which we're not going to quite yet, we eliminate those two sites. And then we've got some sites with some funny shapes. So sites three and four are very much not rectilinear, and site one is sort of oblong. And so we've eliminated those sites for a number of reasons. Now we can go on to the next slide. So the sites under consideration, starting with site two in the northeast side. It's about a 600 acres owned by the Benders. So altogether, 600 acres. Site seven in the southeast is about 270 acres, South Belmont Lane. Do I have that Belmont Lane? Might have it spelled wrong. Site eight, this is owned by Jefferson County. It's up south of the airport. It's 194 acres. Site nine is 194 acres, 95 acres, which is also owned by Jefferson County. That's the one that we talked about in the application to COIC. So that's the one that we've been predominantly thinking about up until about now. And then site 10, which is 173 acres owned by the Clouders Trust. And we understand that there's concern about, you know, potential for site 10 because that's an area that I think the farming community is certainly invested in continuing to farm. So that'll be a consideration as we continue through this a little bit later. So on the next slide, under additional considerations. So what we're going to be doing here is we're following Oregon's statewide land use planning process, which says you first have to look at urban reserve area and exceptions land and non-resourced land. We did. We found that it was very hilly and had steep slopes. We eliminated areas five and six. There's no second priority, which is marginal land. There's none of that in Jefferson County. Third priority is for farm and forest land that's not predominantly high-value farmland. Well, almost all the land around Madras is high-value farmland. So the existing five sites are identified as high-value farmland. So that leaves us with the fourth priority for all of our existing other sites that we're considering. On the next slide, what our next steps are after having this discussion is getting input from stakeholders, such as property owners, asking questions, and I'll go back to the slide before, if you can, Fatma, please, of site two, site 10, and site seven. Talking with them, are you interested in being brought into the urban growth boundary? And would you be willing to meet the requirements of the Large Lot Industrial Program? Which Scott Edelman can describe the requirements a little bit.
Any site that is interested in becoming part of the Large Lot Program would have to accept the city's large lot zoning, regional industrial large lot zoning, which includes, you can't divide your site, anything less than 50 acres. And so once you get that one user that used at least 50 acres, then you can divide the rest for other industrial uses. But that's one key, and that's locked in place for at least 10 years, longer if the city wants it. And as Nick indicated this morning, it's highly unlikely that the city would choose to do anything, change the zoning after 10 years because it's so valuable to have a large lot. John Stark gave a presentation to City Council and Board of Commissioners a month or so, a month or two ago. And he showed the activity that's happened in each of the cities around in central Oregon that they've been involved in. And if I remember the chart right, we ranked right up there with Palbute as far as activity that's gone on, but way below all the other cities. The two reasons, he stated, one was we don't have a representative of EDCO for the community directly. But the other was a lack of a large lot site. And that's really common around the state to see that in an economic study saying, we need a large lot site. So this is an opportunity to have one. And that's why I think Nick said that it would be unlikely the city in the future would choose to. And that's such a good resource that's sitting out there. And then along with the 10-year commitment, 50 acres, you'd have to, you'd be limited to uses, which are the uses listed in the city's zone for the large lot, their traded sector uses. So it can just be any kind of industrial. And then the other aspect is they have to be willing to sell and sell at fair market prices. So not every property's interested in large lot. When Redmond did theirs, they had one other site besides the DSL site. So it's not that common for a property to be willing to put these restrictions on their land.
And so one of the advantages that John pointed out in this morning's meeting of having a county-owned site be this site is that counties, cities, municipalities can wait for a while for development to happen. Whereas if it's privately owned, then of course, that can be more of a problem. So I believe that one of the next steps is going to be discussion with the Bender family about site two and discussion about site seven as well. I'm not sure what the plans are for discussion around site 10. I imagine you'll be talking to the owners, but we're not imagining that there's going to be a lot of interest there. And if none of these property owners are really interested in this, then I'm assuming if we go to the next slide, we'll continue forward with the analysis, which looks at each of the four goal 14 criteria here. You know, which of these sites can most efficiently accommodate the identified land needs? Where can you do the most orderly and economic provision of public facilities and services? Issues around comparative environmental energy, economic and social consequences. And then compatibility of the proposed urban uses with nearby agricultural and forest activities. So those are all things that were required to do an analysis of, and we would imagine doing that analysis. And so with that, that's really the end of my presentation. The questions for you is, you know, do you have any questions or concerns about the areas under discussion? Is there additional information that you'll hope will be brought forward? What do you all think in the end is the question?
Well, just, this is Commissioner Urban. Just looking at the map, to me, lot or choice or option number seven seems just out of character for the land that's contiguous there. And I know that we have more residential going in towards that area. I mean, is there a benefit or a detriment to pushing that industrial land more towards the north since it's already there? Is there a benefit to the city to have a separate location in the south? Just asking for general conversation.
Well, from my perspective at staff, I don't think there is that benefit. Certainly, we have the mixed-use employment land on the south end of town. Basically, most of the land south of the Fairgrounds Road is mixed-use employment, which was a strategy the city employed in about 2016 to get more industrial land because he didn't have any industrial land and couldn't justify anymore to come into our urban growth boundary. So we took our general commercial zone and said, hey, let's add light industrial uses to that. The challenge with site seven in my mind is really transportation and sewer. And then, of course, the adjacent seat residential. So there's compatibility. And so, you know, sewer's going to be a real challenge there. You're going to have to have a much greater extension. Transportation, you know, you don't want to be sending, as Beth alluded to, called industrial traffic. And, you know, what does that look like? Well, maybe think about, for those of us that know the industrial site in Madras, think about the activity, the vehicles that are driving through Keith Manufacturing, the Brightwood area on a daily basis. Is that the traffic you really want to go through or near residential areas? I don't think so, because that's probably a good way to fill this room in a public hearing. So that, in my mind, are kind of three areas I have a problem with area seven. So that's kind of my perspective. Um, so that's that's kind of my perspective on that.
And we kept it on the list because those issues will come up in the evaluation, the goal fourteen evaluation. Um, and we wanted to make sure that if the property owner was interested, that we had a real discussion um about it.
A- and and probably not to be uh overlooked is the value of being transparent about the actual sites that do meet these criteria. And and uh objectively identifying them as meeting criteria and then going through that goal fourteen process so that planning commission, council and board commissioners ultimately know that we we uh had a robust analysis that looked at it, it wasn't uh didn't start with a John decide from the beginning.
Um, this is Commissioner Kendall. Um, I agree with the uh site seven being not the best. Um, having that kind of traffic um near residential and we are uh doing extensive building out there. Um, but what about site nine and eight and nine, if that's already county owned? Wouldn't that be the two most ideal, easiest to work with because you're not dealing with private owners? Um, you're dealing with another municipality.
There's a lot of ways in which site two has some advantages to it if the property owners were interested. Um, and I'm not sure if anybody from the county wants to talk about their thoughts on site two. But I'll also mention that getting electricity to site two is going to be easier.
Then eight and eight and nine?
Eight and nine, yeah.
So eight and nine presents a logistics challenge.
I think eight and nine are very interesting and logistics challenge can be overcome. But if site two, if the property owners were motivated um for this, that might provide a better opportunity.
Jeff Rasmussen, county administrative officer, from the county's perspective, site two is the best option. But the only reason we're here is because they they have not wanted to participate in uh selling the land we offered to buy it twelve years ago. Um, we had to sit down with them less than six months ago regarding some of the same ownership of land inside the city. Um, they came to be willing to accept an an offer, not from us, but from another person. And then we asked at that time if they would consider uh selling the whole piece. It was like, oh, let's, you know, get it all done, and they again said they're not interested in crossing Cherry. Um, and then recently, the city's uh gone through a process to identify um par- properties that can be listed on Oregon Prospector. That's through Business Oregon, it's not an MLS for real estate, but it's real close to that, so you basically agree to list your land as available, you don't have to even put a price down. And they were, they weren't even interested in that for the property that's already in the city and already zoned.
Jeff, you might want to talk into the microphone a little more.
Trying to look at everybody at the same time. Uh, but yeah, from the county's perspective, that's why we're here is because the site two seems to be the juggernaut, it's the best, but there there's just not a an ability to uh keep it going.
And let me be clear, if we were talking about site two, we wouldn't be talking about all hundred, six hundred acres. We would need somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred acres.
If I may, the really, the the crux is if you expand your urban growth boundary for a a need like this, but it can't be sold because the property owner is not going to sell it. Or it has some inherent limitation to it that doesn't allow that site to be used and developed. We've just spent a lot of time and money. And we will not achieve our outcome. So there is inherently a lot of uh good reason for the city to find the best site. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at each other ten, fifteen, twenty years from now saying, oh, yeah, we're going to develop this site, but and then we're going to have a list of reasons why it can't be. Uh, and we want to make sure that we're finding the site that can be reasonably developed as soon as possible or the best site. So that's really the the challenge here.
Um, question regarding site two, are the owners possibly willing to, like she said, we don't need all six hundred acres, do two hundred, are they even open to that kind of discussion?
Uh, we will, we will have that discussion with them again as part of this process. Um, like I said, three weeks ago, just to get the conversation on the sixty acres already in the city, the message kind of back was check with us in about a year.
Okay, so when you approached him, you didn't, you approached him for a smaller portion of the session?
I told them we would be coming contacting them regarding this process very soon. Um, and to kind of think of who they wanted to be at the table representing the family.
Okay, so the idea was to get in front of planning commissioners here, the board of commission and the city council before we took the next step.
So if if two does not become viable, like um uh Nick said, we don't want to increase the urban boundary and do all this work and then not have it be usable. Is, and so I'm going to go back to lots eight and nine. If two was not an option, are either eight and nine a viable enough option to put in the time, energy and money?
I think we need to have some discussion with Jeff Heard, um, uh, in part to differentiate well enough between them. But the intention is if site two is not an option, then uh looking very closely at site nine. Um, and doing the evaluation and making sure that we're understanding what the city would be getting into.
Right.
Um, uh, and going further down the line with that, so that is my long way of saying, yes, I think so.
I'll add that uh to even start the process, you have to have a site. Uh, so we had to propose a site, which is the county's one. Um, and as Beth indicated, we applied to COIC. Uh, Nick and I were both around and were part of the committee that formed the whole, you know, participated in the legislation that created this program. And COIC was identified by the region as um sort of the broker of comment so that because it is a regional program, there's only six sites with some opportunity for replenishment, but there has to be a way for cities and counties to agree that, yes, that's a site we want to use for one of our sites because it could affect the whole region. So we took it to the board with this site being proposed and unanimously got support for that, and that's why we were able to continue.
And site nine or?
Site nine, site nine was the one we took to them, but we do need to consider as part of the process all the other sites.
Of course. Uh, this is uh Commissioner Locke from the county. And do we have a timeline for when we would like to have a site selected? With with Jeff talking about, the family talking about, maybe approach them in a year, do we have a timeline?
Uh, I I'm just using the word twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, so uh I think we need to let the discussions with the family um and any other landowners proceed um and not overcrowd that. Um, but we're we're anticipating, I'm hoping to be in hearings later on here um in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Uh, back to the power question, uh, do we know what that um kind of whi- which direction is the power going to come from? What will that potentially cost? And who would be um responsible to pay for that? Would that be city, county, or the um potential people wanting to bring in?
I'm going to take the first half of the answer and you guys can take the second half. Um, so uh, you've got an existing power company that provides power in rural areas here. Um, I wish I could remember their name.
Central Electric.
Central Electric, thank you very much. Um, uh, what we have heard from them is, sure, they could provide a megawatt or two. Um, uh, you know, over a little bit of time, in other words, you can't just buy the megawatt instantly, it takes some time for that. Um, if you're looking at data centers, data centers take twenty, thirty, fifty, sixty megawatts. Um, so they take a lot of power. Um, and so if there's a real desire for that and it's a real possibility, then that becomes more complicated, and that's where you're talking with Pacific Power um and and negotiating between the two. Um, what we, we talked to Pacific Power about what their plans are for um doing some upgrades in central Oregon. Because everybody wants power. Um, and everybody wants a lot of power for exactly these reasons, and there's not that much power on our grid yet. So they they've got plans that are, they're talking about five to seven years. Uh, it will take between, you know, th- this planning that they're in to having implemented those upgrades. That's going to take some amount of time. Um, it's also going to take the city time um to do its planning for water, wastewater, transportation. So it's it's not like any of that is time wasted, that would be concurrent um in a lot of ways. This is, it's a long term sort of uh uh thing that the city and the county are trying to do. Now, who negotiates with them, who pays for it? I'm going to hand it over to uh Nick and Scott.
Well, the the short answer is usually the developer pays. It's just like if you're doing a subdivision and they need to build the street or, you know, uh, improve the street, you know, uh, they they generally pay for it, that's the rule of thumb. Um, but details matter. And what we're hearing from the utility providers are, well, it depends on what the development is, how much power is needed, when that power is needed. And they've got about three or four other things, so it kind of really, it depends, is is really the answer. Um, uh, as as we've talked about, uh, po- power really is a is a key to this, um, but I think from a staff level, there's awareness that uh Bonneville Power, Pacific Power and PGE and others are making tremendous improvements. Uh, or are starting to make those improvements for transmission and distribution of power. And um, as Beth is just kind of gently and and being easily talking about it, there's a lot of power demand in eastern Oregon for solar. Uh, and and a lot of there's a lot of new demand that's being um discussed in the Lema Valley, primarily in Hillsboro area for chip manufacturing. So, um, the question is timing, how can they deliver it? Uh, when I talked with Matt Chancellor, the region manager for Pacific Power, maybe three, four months ago, he said, well, you know, there may be some interim solutions to get some power for maybe a phase, first phase of development, but then you know, in in six to ten years, we we would hook them up to the new transmission lines that we're trying to put in or distribution. So it it really is dependent upon time, the nature of development and where they're at on their construction. Um, and and so really though, in my mind, from economic development and finding the site and getting that developed, a lot of it's going to depend on power.
And keep in mind that a megawatt is a lot of power and a lot of manufacturing uh in processes, that's plenty of power for them, that's more power than they're going to need. Um, it's just if you're you're really looking at data centers, which is very exciting for everybody, um, those need a lot of power, a lot, a lot of power.
Thank you. So, oh, um, you've mentioned data centers three times. And I I know in Primeville, um, that has has worked well and uh up on the, in Boardman. And both of them have the benefit of having power, uh, it's not power, um, of having water. Because the other piece of data centers is they require a lot of water to keep them cooled down because of all their megawatts they're using. Here in Jefferson County, water is not necessarily in abundance for us. Have you guys um looked into?
We haven't gone down that route, and it may well be that as we go down that route, we look at it and say, uh, data centers just aren't the right choice. Um, let's be looking at the type of manufacturing that we've talked about. Um, and that's going to be fine, um, from my perspective, since I'm not attached to data centers particularly. Um, it may well be that Nick really wants a data center here.
Why should you do?
Uh, sure, they've got good paying jobs.
Talk about water.
Yeah.
So, um, the infrastructure component is really important for this project. And uh, my assumption is, uh, well, I I'm going to tell you, we're going to bring a proposal to you in several months that's going to make some assumptions about infrastructure. We're going to have to make assumptions. But our ability to be very speci- uh, to specifically understand the infrastructure needs to get these sites developed is going to be really important. So the the city and the county just submitted uh or worked cooperated with CYC in October, I think it was, to submit a a federal grant to improve our infrastructure planning in and around this area. And that would focus primarily on uh transportation, power and water, okay? I see water the same way you do. The shoots valley would provide water service. Question is how? But one of the challenges with the shoots valley water, and I wish they were here, would be they they do not take an active, uh, as active in role in planning and land use and development as I would like. And it will be critically important to bring them to the table, to understand how we get high volumes of water to this site and the entire industrial site moving forward. Because once you have a plan, then you can execute that plan, right? That allows us to communicate to developers, you know, you need to put in a twenty-four inch water line from this point to this point, I'm I'm just making that up. But if you don't have a plan, you can't communicate that. So the intention is, we're we're trying to go after a federal grant to do that level of planning and analysis. And and I actually just uh reached out to the state of Oregon, Business Oregon, about if we don't get that grant, we'd like to uh maybe see if they have some funding to help us do that, so. Bigger picture, the first, the first step is make some reasonable assumptions about your infrastructure. And and those assumptions, uh, again, need to be reasonable, not pie in the sky. Uh, need to be consistent with development uh expectations. Bring the site into urban growth boundary, once we get it into the urban growth boundary, we'll need to start doing some very detailed infrastructure planning so that we can uh improve the likelihood of this site getting developed. Does that make sense, commissioners?
I've had some conversations with the, uh, lack of better terms, a data data center consultant, he goes and looks for land. And so we had talked and we had expressed concerns of the image of water. Mainly because we're all going through a drought, even though we we can point easily to the shoots valley water, if they can get the water there, it'll have little impact on the drought for for egg. Um, and he points that the systems now are going closed loop. You you fill it up once, and they've figured out this is a cost savings for them too. And a lot of the profit you've seen or revenue shared in Primeville has been the water usage and then franchisees on the power that they used. And so they're, they've figured out, if we're going to run these things for twenty years, we let let's look at lowering costs, and if it's water, then and they may pay a little more to put the whole system together, but they're they're filling it up once.
So then you just have to cool your water down so it can continue cooling your systems down. Luckily, we're in a cooler region, at least in the winter.
Yeah, and you could just, yeah, that's up to them to figure out, or you could probably do the geothermal stuff.
I say put it underground.
Yeah, put it underground.
Close to there.
Can I ask a question? What is the current zoning of eight, nine and ten?
It's EFU zoned.
Is it irrigated?
Yes. I believe all, I believe all of them are, that's eight is not, oh, eight is not, okay. That is the problem we're running into, is they're all the same zoning, all the same roughly quality of soil. Um, any lands that you look at on that, you know, the west side of Maderis, west and north are the same zoning, same same uh soil types.
And I would point out that eight only is is dry because the the water rights were sold years ago before the county bought it. So there there is the ability, if you were to transfer water back on there. So I don't want to make it sound like it's dry, and it's because it's not able to get water.
And per state land use law, it defines irrigated lands as lands that either have irrigation and water rights or lands that at any point in the past did have water rights. They, I assume that was put in place to avoid people getting their water rights just so they could then develop their land.
Isn't there a shooting club out there also?
On the county owned land?
Yes, there is, it's on uh city property, it would be on the land uh called in between sites nine and eight. There's uh actually the the uh trap uh pistol and trap club, I'm going to get that slightly wrong, and then there's also the shooting range, I'm sorry, Joel, I know, I think you're chair of that, aren't you?
Uh, there's the Mount Jefferson Rifle Archery and Pistol Association, which is the indoor club.
Thank you.
And then adjacent is the Jefferson County Rod and Gun Club, which is like the trap club.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, apologize. Thank you. Apologize for bumbling that name.
It sounds way cooler the way Joel said it.
So Joel, as somebody involved in that, or, you know, from your perspective there, are you looking at the using going, I have concerns about that related to that existing use?
I mean, it's something that's been a discussion in our, our organization. Because you do have the, the dirt circle track right there, then us, then the trap club. But, I mean, like in the piece that we're on, I think it's technically like 40 acres. But it's a really weird 40 acres. There's about 10 acres of, you know, square usable land. The rest kind of takes off at a weird, you know. But it always, it has been a concern that eventually, when there's a higher priority use for that land, that we'll need to be chopping.
But I have to make sure that you don't cheat your neighbors here.
Oh, we're actually fairly state-of-the-art from Madras, Oregon.
Not surprised, belonging to a rifle range myself.
Yeah.
And, and I would point out from a staff perspective, the, the types of development we're trying to recruit are pretty large and substantial. And so if in fact, some of the city's land would be needed for development, that would affect any of those organizations, we're likely going to be able to work with those organizations to relocate them, okay? And, and we'll be able to communicate that early on, give us some lead time on that. So I, I, I just, it's, it's a little thing, but I also think there is awareness of it.
So is there an issue with the trap club? I mean, how close is it about to the zone? Because I'm not, I'm not crazy on relocation. It hasn't worked great in other places. Redmond got displaced. So, I mean, and they have to go buy new ground and move way out.
I, I will mention that the, these two areas are pretty far away from that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and there's even, there's another privately owned parcel to the north of the trap club. You know, and then like on the other side of us is the circle track. So, I mean, it, it's kind of a weird blend of use there, but right now it works, you know, so. But I think we are far enough away. It wouldn't be an, an immediate impact at least.
So this might be not the most fun question or concern to raise, but at least from the county end of Planning Commission, we often have Central Oregon Land Watch and Thousand Friends of Oregon that strongly oppose any building of any EFU, you know, changing any zoning from EFU. And they have pretty deep pockets. And so my question would be, do we, are we prepared to spend the money to to go through the, the legal battle with them?
I'll, I'll start answering that question, and I won't really answer the question. And then Jeff and Scott can continue. So all of this land is equally bad. So it's all equally high-value harm, farm, farmland, farmland. And so to the extent that we're paying attention, and we are, at, at, at least I think we are, or trying to, to, uh, uh, concerns for the local farming community and trying to go to land that is less valued by the local farm community, I would think that that would carry some weight with it. Legally, the city is certainly, and the county is certainly within their legal rights to do this. You know, this is a very specific process the state of Oregon has, has set out. I would have to imagine, and I haven't had any discussion with, with Scott or Jeff or Nick about this, but we'd be smart to engage people from there and talk to them about what we're doing. But I hadn't gone any further in my thinking than that.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, because we fully expect Land Watch to be involved in the process, DLCD, possibly Thousand Friends, although they don't get involved in our, our projects nearly as much as Land Watch. That's part of the reason we hired Beth, you know, a top-notch consultant to put together robust findings that are defensible. Like, like she said, we, we have the, the basis for it, which is the regional large lot. So we, and we demonstrate that there's need just based on that. When, once you demonstrate a need, you have to show that you have the best site, or at least a site that's no worse than any other site. And we think we can get there through this process. But it very well still could be appealed, but they do have, they, even though they have a lot of deep pockets, they have, do have to watch where they spend their money, and they, they may appeal it, but I don't know, I don't know that we can speak to whether or not what we do if they did appeal. We're hoping we won't get there. I do know that often, if they don't have the support of, you know, the local farmers, then that, that does sometimes dissuade them. They, you know, the other one that you're familiar with that they appealed, they had some local citizens who contacted them and got them involved. I think they'll get involved without that this time, but I think we are planning to talk to the, the farmers. And I think some of those conversations have already started. And our, you know, our hope would be not necessarily to come out and support, but that they agreed not to oppose it.
Thank you, Scott. I know that there are several farmers who are opposed currently. Whether they have, you know, seen anything as far as what options have been considered that I, I can't speak on their behalf about, but Site Two has not had water and has not been farmed in several years. And then you said eight also does not have water and has not been farmed also?
I, I would, it's been farmed probably in the last 10 years. But I, I think that was pumping sewer, sewer water, or whatever we call that. Reclaim, that's the, that's the, that's the sexy way to say. And so since we've bought it, we've planted barley to keep the weeds down. We've had some contact with people every once in a while to, if they want to go through the process to, to lease it from us for farming. We have, we've been hesitant to do that, knowing that they want like a 10 to 15-year agreement, because they have to put the infrastructure in for the pumping and all of that.
And are you referring to Site Eight?
Site Eight, yes.
Okay.
Site Nine or has farm leases on it right now, on all, all three farm parcels.
Anyway, I know that's not the, you know, fun thing to talk about, but I, whenever you're talking about development and changing zoning, our experience has been, sometimes they're pretty aggressive. And, you know, all of those, all of us here are, you know, county taxpayers. So that's something to be mindful of as well, so.
Are there other questions or comments?
I, to sort of piggyback on what you've brought up, in approaching, water has been a big issue with the farmers. And those data centers require a lot of water. In the conversation with them of how we would like to future maybe possibly develop, I think that could be a real source bond. If we're willing to develop in an area that requires a lot of water and farmers have fought so hard for water, I don't, I, I would see that maybe as, you know, just a hurtful spot, because there's been so much conflict with water provision for, for farmers and farmland and ranchers. And then to talk about, well, we'd like to future develop this and possibly do data centers which require a lot of water unless they can recirculate, and you can somehow show them that you have good faith that, oh, now all of a sudden we have water for data centers, but we didn't have water for your ranches.
Great, great point. Nick's staff and the county, both city and county have awareness on that. But, but we need to remind ourselves where the water comes from. There's two sources of water, right? So.
And those are?
Well, North Unit is, is providing irrigation, water for irrigation through their canal system. What we're suggesting is these data centers are going to use water from Deschutes Valley Water, totally different source. Okay? But your point is important because water is so important in the area, but in some regards, the public may not know the difference between irrigation water and domestic water that's provided by Deschutes Valley Water.
Absolutely.
Right? So I want to be clear that if we're, we're going to be looking at water for what would be a municipal use, that being for development, it would be coming from Deschutes Valley Water. So it would not be competing with the water that farmers want and need to farm their land.
That's an excellent point and an awesome point to really put upfront. Get that clarification so that you don't have that rub.
It sounds like we might need to do some more research as to how much water the newest systems use. Because I have heard from multiple sources, including my colleagues in Prineville, that their more recent data centers are, are not using nearly as much water, a fraction of it. We've heard, I think, the same from Edco about that. Jeff heard referred to it as kind of first-generation data center, so I think they have come a long way. So just the fact that these points are being raised maybe means we need to do a little research so we can put some numbers to it.
Yeah, and that's not a, that's not a hundred percent accurate either. In the last few years in the drought, they have been leasing Deschutes Valley Water to farmers. And when that's been going on, it's caused a major delivery draw. And I know you were saying that Deschutes Valley Water is way behind in the infrastructure, and that is the problem. You know, more than anything, but right now, some of these little tiny raises in use have just shut down whole systems and housing and everything. So I think, I'm not saying, and I know you said it's, they're recirculating, and maybe it's not a problem, but it's not solely two, two different uses. I mean, there is both. If you're willing to pay for it, you can use it for whatever you want.
The assumption is that not, most farmers can't afford it, right?
The last couple of years, it's been used for potato farming and tree farming. And so there is, yeah, there is uses that are, you can afford it, but anyway.
So what I would bring us back to is that, let's say we finish up this process in this year, and so land actually comes into the urban growth boundary, and it's not appealed. So let's just call that the, the very successful, very speedy process. Then you're at the, I, I don't know, five to 10 years before you can even really start thinking about development happening at that site and what development would actually happen. We may all love data centers today, but maybe in five years from now, we've decided that data centers are not the appropriate thing, and zoning has changed to not allow them. And maybe there's some other thing that is manufactured that is, this site is the right thing for. So I'm not discounting any of what you're saying. I'm saying there's a lot of space between this discussion and something actually happening. So there's, I think, space to have those discussions and then to do the appropriate planning to meet what the, oh, when I say community, I mean county and city, the, the broader community's goals are. So the hard part is, all right, the hard part from my perspective is getting the land in. That's not the hard part. The hard part is the, the infrastructure planning and then actually getting a business to locate there. Those are, I think, frankly, much harder. But you got to start somewhere. A different property that is owned by somebody else? I'm pretty sure. I mean, unless we've got, unless it's owned by the Bender family, and it's just not in a, a standard name that we could recognize.
That's a, that's a separate ownership, like 40 acres probably.
About that, yeah. So again, we'd be looking at a portion of that site, I would imagine. Rectangle or something like that, maybe down towards the south part of the site, nearer to the urban growth boundary.
But Area Two at the top northeast already has a 10, 10-megawatt solar farm on it. So not, not all of that, you know, it's going to be, you know, if they're interested, then we can work on getting it down to the right size of what, you know, that's right close to Cherry. If they want to get, be interested.
And what was the, on Site 10, it's not as ideal because it's not owned by the county? And because of, because of its proximity to, to the highway?
No, the proximity to the highway would be great. It's owned by the Clouders Trust. And from what I've heard, what I've understood is there's concern from the local farm community about urban development north of some street?
Dogwood, yeah. And so that is north of Dogwood? Yeah, okay.
And so while it's on here, because it meets all of our criteria, we're thinking it's going to, not show up well in the analysis, especially based on the existing uses.
Thank you. I just needed a reminder, looking at this map, I was trying to picture.
No.
Yeah, Dogwood runs right between, the line between nine and 10.
Thank you.
Since they're all comparable land in terms of the, of the scheme, there's going to be some opportunity for, for those kind of discussions. Are there other questions?
So maybe one kind of maybe final question for commissioners. As we move forward and maybe think about a proposal coming before you in a public hearing, how can we, are there questions you have or issues that you see that we could address before we bring that proposal to you?
Make sure that the, the three things that you said were the most important, or two things, you know, power and water. I mean, if you're bringing a proposal that's large with that, knowing that those two main issues are not going to be something that undermines it or turns into a very challenging overcoming. So just knowing that that's already there, because you put it on the radar when you said the key things are going to be power and development, which, and water, depending on what it is. Make sure that those are well addressed.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, especially for power, there's only going to be a certain distance we can go to address some of those, because there's so many unknowns from the power company. But we can bring more information forward, certainly.
And like you said, everybody is searching for power. I mean, with all the vehicles requiring power and everything, just like. And how much power do these solar farms produce? I mean, there, there's several very large some here in Jefferson County. Are they being helpful to us at all, or is it just pie in the sky and they really are not producing as much power as maybe people think they are?
Well, they're helpful. I was going to see if maybe Jeff or Scott remembered. We had a meeting recently where they, we had a, called consultant team to identify the number of watts on average per acre, megawatts per acre. I think it's like, maybe one megawatt, two megawatts per 40 acres, something like that? Six per 40 acres?
And how much does six megawatts, how does that help?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you this right now. Matt, Matt Chancellor from Pacific Power told me whole city Madras is about six megawatts. I'm talking the whole geographic area of like the city Madras, city limits, so it's six megawatts. And so these data centers need 10, 20 per data center. So if, we're in, if, if you look at Prineville, there's hundreds of megawatts going there. And so that's why solar isn't, it's part of the solution, but it's not the solution.
It's not producing as much as, as, as being demanded.
That's right. That's right.
Cause they are, the picture that's being produced or put out there is, oh, let's go solar. It's clean, yada, yada. But if it doesn't meet the demand.
Commissioner, I, I would say it's, uh, good for normal, uh, urban uses. Um, data centers are, are sort of extraordinary uses.
That's an industrial scale power need, right? Totally different. Uh, Brightwood, I think they use like two megawatts.
Oh, well, that, that gives me a perspective of how much. And if the solar is producing six megawatts, that's still pretty good.
It's good, but then it doesn't produce power in the evening and those data centers don't turn off, remember? So.
There's some really interesting upgrades to our power systems statewide that I think are, are going to be happening. Uh, that we were, the person we were talking to at Pacific Power was describing some really interesting things. So I'm, I'm not saying it's going to be enough.
I would. But at least in the pipeline.
Other questions or concerns?
I would just say a side note on the solar, um, farms, that, um, they're not always quite as green as they like to say they are, um, when they've got, um, diesel powered generators to rotate their, panels. Yes. Uh, another question I have for you, and I promise this will be my last question. Uh, at the beginning of your presentation, you, um, talked about the, um, the large lot industrial program. And the three sites of fifty to a hundred, two sites of one to two hundred, and one site of two hundred plus.
In the other direction?
Does that mean that if we designate one of these sites that we're talking about this evening? That, that are in the one to two hundred acre that we, and we used, um, one for the Daimler's proving ground already? Does that mean that there won't be any more opportunity for a one to two hundred acre?
Can we go to slide two, please? I just want to put up the numbers you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, so those are the sites that were in the original, uh, analysis. One of the one to two hundred acre sites, um, has been taken. We're proposing to take the other one. And the two hundred plus acre sites have been ta, site has been taken. There's an opportunity to replenish the sites, um, in the, uh, in the analysis. That's something that COIC would have to, um, go through a process of. I'll note that the, uh, the, uh, large lot industrial program's been in effect for a decade. And only now are we, you know, looking at using the second big site. So I would imagine that that is something that the cities, um, and the counties may request COIC to do. Um, and there are provisions for that.
And specifically, the legislation allows for three replenishment sites in addition to the six original. And also there's a ten-year, Nick just reminded me, a ten-year requirement for updating, which COIC is, I think, trying to do now. I, we don't know if they received funds to do it yet or not. But, uh, at that point, you know, they always have an opportunity when they replay, when they update it to, uh, to consider replenishment again.
Okay, so we're not, uh, kind of putting ourselves, painting ourselves into a corner if we chose a site and then we decided we needed another site?
Or if you chose a site that turned out to be the wrong site, then you have the opportunity. I'm not suggesting this is a good idea. But you know, if in, in ten or fifteen years, you're like, that was the wrong site for reasons we couldn't imagine ten, ten years ago, um, you can do what's called an urban growth boundary land swap. Um, you can say, we're going to take this land out of the UGB and replace it with this land here for these reasons.
Thank you.
Also, maybe Scott can talk about his history at Prineville. When those data centers came on, they, they needed a couple hundred acres, but they didn't need to use the large lot process. They were able to use another process.
Yeah, they, they did. We did. Um, the first site for Facebook came on with about a hundred and sixty acres, I want to say, that was already in the urban growth boundary. But after that, once we used that, we had, at the time, had an updated, um, economic development, EOA, Economic Opportunities Analysis, which is what demonstrates the needs of a city for economic lands, commercial and industrial. And so that study already said that we had a need at the time that we lost the hundred and sixty. So we made the argument to expand by two hundred and forty acres that we need to replenish what we lost that, that this, that our EOA said we already needed. The key to that, because a lot of other cities have wanted to do that because Prineville's done it eight to eleven times. It's just been one after another. Um, and they could do it because of having that updated study. That's, that's, that showed that there was a need. Or even one that showed that you had exactly what you needed, but then you use a hundred and sixty acres of it. You, they, they could do replenishment and say, well, we don't have what we need anymore.
Essentially, if you have it and you use it, then it's easier to get more than if you never had it. Um, and you would like to have it. So we're working with, uh, another city, um, in the Willamette Valley where they have a very small industrial land base and trying to make the argument for them that they need to have a larger industrial land base consistent with, uh, other cities throughout the Willamette Valley. Um, our system, that is a flaw in our system. Um, that if you don't have it, then it's hard to show that you, you need it. So honestly, if, you know, if Madras succeeds at this in ten years from now, or eight years from now, or whatever, the site develops and you do a new economic opportunities analysis, you can say, hey, we've got these, uh, these industrial sites, they've developed. Need more of that kind of thing so that we can continue our economic development. It's an easier argument to make. I'm gonna hand it back to you, Nick.
Yeah, uh, chairs, thank you for your time this evening. I think that concludes our presentation. Great discussion. Uh, might I suggest for our planning commissioners, if you've got, uh, and probably the county commissioners as well, if you've got thoughts or questions, uh, after tonight, um, feel free to email staff and we're happy to research or, or, uh, take and consider your questions as we move forward developing this proposal. So with there, uh, I think I would encourage you to maybe consider adjourn your meetings.
Uh, do we need a motion to do that, or can we just adjourn? County, are you ready to adjourn? All right, let's adjourn this work session with the city of Madras and the Jefferson County as of, I think it says eight seventeen PM. Does that work? Thank you.